Good evening, good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I am councillor Mohammed Ayew, Chair of Traffic Management Subcommittee. I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting, which is, which is councillors are now required to attend in person following the expiry of Coronavirus Act Regulation, which is, which permitted online meetings. We are now meeting in social distance layout in the council chamber with a small number of speed seats provided for press and public, including five public speakers this evening. We will be...
Sorry, that's incorrect. There's only...
Oh, three, sorry, there's only three, three. One public and two, one. So there's only one public speaker tonight?
Yeah.
This evening. We'll be using the new equipment connecting us to the chamber in Microsoft Teams meeting. This is a live stream available through the Teams and the recording meeting will be uploaded to the website afterwards. I also like to announce that councillor, councillor Davine is unable to take part in this meeting in person due to his wife's not being well. He'll be joining us remotely online. Okay, thank you. And the first item, we have declaration of interest. Anybody on the floor? No? And I would like to make a declaration on item five, which is financially, to me, I would ask the Vice Chair of Traffic Management Councillor Hacker to step for that item only, and I'll leave the bill. Okay. Okay, so number two is the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on the 15th of September 2021. Can I take those as correct record for me to sign? Yeah. Right. And item three is questions from public, member of public and councillors. And the first one I have is Mr Matthew, George Matthews, on the bill. George Matthews, good evening, sir. Welcome. You have five minutes for your question, which is on Kendrick Road.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think it'll be less than five minutes. Just to talk about Kendrick Road, I know there's been traffic measurements that have been placed in Kendrick Road and over the Redlands area, and I've been talking to some residents who live in, on Kendrick Road, and they've raised concerns about those traffic measures, and they, and they are worried about the traffic calming measures that have recently been put in place, especially that it's increased travel time and also reduced safety. So my question would be, would you be able to give an update on the scheme itself, and if it's had, and do you feel that that's had an adverse impact on travel, time and safety?
Thank you, Mr Matthew. Can I invite the Lead Councillor for Transport, Environment and Planning to respond on my behalf, councillor Page?
Thank you, Chair, and I thank Mr Matthew for his question. Road safety is measured by reviewing police supplied casualty information so that any pattern in the locations and causes can be considered. Kendrick Road has a good safety record. The recent features introduced on Kendrick Road were part of a wider package of enhancements in the Redlands Ward area that were and are intended to improve compliance with the 20 mile per hour zone restriction. Being a residential street, expediting journey times along the length of Kendrick Road was not a focus of the scheme. The build-out elements were implemented within existing parking bays, and the speed cushions are intended to deter speeding, so the measures are not likely to have impacted on journey times compared to previous compliance with the legal speed limit and navigation around on-street parking. There are no indications that the scheme has reduced safety, as has been suggested. Officers communicate closely with Thames Valley Police, who are also statutory consultees on the scheme. The scheme designs were independently road safety audited ahead of implementation, as has been reported previously to this subcommittee. As was stated at the time of scheme approval, a post-implementation audit will be commissioned, and officers will review any items arising from this process. A report will then be brought back to this subcommittee later next year. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr Matthews, do you have a supplementary question?
Well, actually, the answer seems to be quite comprehensive, and I'm happy to hear that, that there are no indicators that the scheme has reduced safety, which is what I heard from the residents, and I'll pass that on to some of the Kendrick residents. But at the same time, I do look forward to the, the post-implementation audit, and once that comes, comes in, you might, I have to ask them more questions and take it from there. Thank you.
Councillor Page?
Can I thank Mr Matthew for his observations? I think it's important that any new scheme such as this is allowed time to settle in for people to get used to it, local residents as well as those who might be driving through the area, and clearly we will be looking to assess the success of the scheme once it's had that chance to, to bed in. But in the meantime, if there are any particular concerns or observations, then I would ask you or other local residents to let me have those observations either direct or via one of your local councillors, and then that can be fed into our professional highways team, who will then take those on board in compiling the report that will come back later next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Matthew, coming in for asking the questions. Now, we move on to councillors' questions. The first question I have is councillor Whitton, Church Road pedestrian crossing.
Thank you, Chair. Church Road is in need of pedestrian crossing over from Parkers Estate Agent to the Co-op. Many children cross Church Road here, and this would improve road safety. Green councillors have been encouraging Wokingham Council to keep moving on this initiative. I understand that Wokingham Council transport planners have been talking to Reading Council transport planners about plans for crossing here. Please, can I get an update on progress? Thanks.
Could I ask councillor Page to respond on my...
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Whitton for his question. Earlier this year, transport officers were asked for feedback on a concept idea from Wokingham Borough Council that involved banning certain vehicle movements at this junction. The concept was proposed to enable adjustments to the traffic signal timings that were intended to improve the crossing of Church Road and peak time traffic flow. However, the concept would have required certain traffic movements being diverted along nearby residential roads within Reading Borough, and transport officers understandably raised their concerns about this. Also, officers also asked their Wokingham Borough Council colleagues whether consideration had been given to implementing a pedestrian crossing phase. At present, our transport officers have not heard about any further proposed alterations at this junction, which I would emphasise is the responsibility of Wokingham Borough Council.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Whitton, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you.
Right, we move on to the next question, which is by councillor Whitton again, electric charging, car charging points.
Thank you, Chair. Electric cars charged using green electricity can help cut pollution. Please come and get an update on the council's trial of licensing residents to charge cars with a cable over the pavement and a device to stop people from tripping over the cable. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Could I ask the lead member councillor Tony Page to respond on my behalf?
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Whitton for his question. As colleagues will be aware, the current COP26 Conference in Glasgow is rightly highlighting the urgent need to reduce our carbon footprint as the council moves toward a net-zero carbon base position. As councillor Whitton is fully aware, the council adopted the Reading Climate Change Strategy 2020 to 2025 in November 2020, and this focuses on reducing Reading's carbon footprint by, among other activities, reducing transport emissions by encouraging walking, cycling, public transport and a switch to electric vehicles. Reading is also declared an air quality management area based on the exceedance of the air quality objective for nitrogen dioxide. As part of these measures, the council approved a one-year trial for electric vehicle charging on the public highway at SEPT Committee on the 15th of March this year to encourage private vehicle owners to move from higher polluting petrol and diesel vehicles to electric, which will contribute towards the ambitions set out within the Reading Climate Change Strategy. The trial would provide a cost-free licence agreement to electric vehicle owners to legally and safely charge their vehicles over the public highway, and the outcome will ultimately inform the council's policy going forward. The council recognises that the move to electric vehicles will result in the need to charge electric and hybrid vehicles on the public highway, and has already installed 15 lamp column and six other public 22 kilowatt electric vehicle charge points borough-wide, with additional sites to be installed as funding opportunities materialise. The council also recognises that suitable on-street electric vehicle charging points are not always available due to the nature of Reading's urban environment and the large number of narrow terrace streets and roads within the road network where no off-street parking is possible. This clearly presents a challenge in relation to charging infrastructure and is not unique to Reading, although we have a much higher proportion of residents living on terrace streets. Residents in these streets usually have no alternative but to charge their electric vehicles from their property while parked on the public highway. The trial proposes two options, either a slot-type drain excavated into the pavement or a covering mat that allows all users of the public highway safe passage without creating an obstruction or a trip hazard. I can confirm that 67 expressions of interest have been received by the council so far. Those residents who provided an email address have been invited to participate in the trial, and the letters to the remaining residents are in the process of being posted. There was a delay in inviting our residents while the highways team prioritised the extensive council-funded nine million three-year residential roads and pavements investment programme. Highways have assured me that the electric vehicle charging trial is now prioritised and underway, and a full year will be given to residents to ensure as many as possible can engage with this important trial. Initial feedback comments on the trial have flagged up concerns from residents in roads where there are heavily subscribed residents' parking schemes about how they can secure parking space directly outside of their own property to charge their vehicle. Currently, the trial is looking at safe options to charge a private vehicle over the highway, but the highway authority is not currently in a position to designate what would be effectively private parking spaces on the public highway within residents' parking schemes. The council recognises that this issue needs to be further explored, especially with the growing demand for electric vehicles. Although currently not an ideal situation, at least residents will be able to safely charge their vehicles when they're able to park outside their property in advance of any possible parking or electric vehicle charging bay solution. This is, of course, a problem that exists across the country in urban terraced areas, and we will be looking to draw on the experience of other authorities as well as the LGA and professional organisations. A report will be brought back to SEPT Committee next year with the outcome of the trial and advice gained from other authorities, and the findings will inform our future policy on charging electric vehicles on the public highway. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Whitton, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you for such a long answer. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the next item, which is item four petition. We have none. And item five is where I declare interests. Reading Station South East Taxi Ranks. Could I ask the Vice Chair, councillor Sarah Hacker, to step in for this item?
So on to agenda item five, which is the Reading Station South East Taxi Ranking Results of Statutory Consultation. Mr Penman, do you want to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair. We've conducted a statutory consultation on proposals to place parking restrictions along Garret Street to both facilitate the Station Hill development and also to facilitate taxi feeder ranking to the Horseshoe Rank outside the south-east of the station. We've had the results, but we've received two responses of support and one further comment. The recommendation of officers is that the subcommittee agree to us sealing the traffic regulation order and implementing those restrictions. And just to respond to some of the, the feedback that we did have, is to clarify that the restriction that allows vehicles out of Garret Street and onto Station Road is enforced, and that should the subcommittee agree to these restrictions being put in place, our enforcement team will also be informed so that they can enforce the WLO lines and the taxi feeder rank restriction as part of the traffic regulation order.
Thank you. Councillor Page?
Thank you, Chair. Can I welcome this report and the recommendations? We've literally been around the block on this issue with earlier reports asking officers in conjunction with the Reading Taxi Association to look at various options should Garret Street not be available. The good news is that over the summer months, the more detailed work that Lincoln have done or has done in connection with the Station Hill scheme means that Garret Street will be required throughout the construction programme, not only to serve the construction works but also other premises off Merchant's Place and further along Garret Street. So that means that, subject to the changes that are recommended in this report, that reduces obviously the extent of feeder ranking along Garret Street, nevertheless retains the facility for taxis to feed the Horseshoe Rank from the top of Garret Street with the appropriate bay indicator device and camera enforcement of that exit point, it delivers a, an arrangement that is much to the satisfaction of the Hackney carriage drivers and the operation of the Horseshoe Rank, as well as avoiding relocating bus stops, which would not have gone down particularly well with Reading buses. So we have a proposal here that causes minimum inconvenience to public transport, maintains the servicing of the Horseshoe Rank, which is not indefinite. I would just make it clear, the RTA and the Hackney carriage drivers know that this is not going to be in perpetuity because once Station Hill is finished, we will be further reviewing servicing and traffic arrangements in that area. Some of us, for example, would like to see the rail air coach service relocated to the north side of the station, which would then enable that area to be used for, possibly for a Hackney carriage in the future. But all of this is still for future discussion. In the meantime, for the next few years, whilst Station Hill continues to be constructed, we have here a, a proposal that has the support of the taxi trade and causes minimum inconvenience to other road users. So Chair, I would propose that we endorse the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Page. Yes, it seems like a very satisfactory conclusion to this consultation. Councillor Cornell?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I support this recommended actions here. It does seem a very comprehensive report, is supportive of the taxi drivers. Just a, a couple of points. In item 4.6, it says the enforced, enforcement by the rank by CCTV is currently not permissible. What, why is this, and is it something we could address? It would seem to me CCTV coverage would improve or gives 24/7 coverage, which is going to be far more effective than anything a foot patrol could offer, and also with, if any potential installation of electric charging points along the ranks would perhaps alter how the rank operates, has that been considered? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Penman?
Thank you. So to answer your, your last question first, I'm, I'm aware that colleagues in our licensing team have been working and looking at EV charging points for, for EV taxis. I think as councillor Page has, has mentioned, this particular rank is, is going to be reviewed upon completion of the Station Hill work. So at this time, it's not a site that I understand that they're looking at, but certainly in the future, yes, that's an ambition of the councillors, I understand, to ensure that we have EV charging infrastructure for EV taxis. And in terms of CCTV enforcement, we can only enforce certain restrictions with CCTV. We're not allowed to enforce things like W yellow lines, taxi ranking type restrictions, we just don't, don't have that, that power. It was removed from, from all authorities quite some years ago. So, so it's, it's something that we are not allowed to do. Otherwise, I, I do agree, CCTV, as we've seen with the Red Roof enforcement, it does enable a more robust enforcement of, of those restrictions, but we're just not allowed to do it.
Councillor Page?
Just coming back on that point, I can make the point that Mr Penman would be loath to make, but it was our good friend, Mr Pickles, that introduced rules that prevent us from enforcing it, and it was his crusade against local government, and we're drawing our discretion on a whole range of issues that mean that we can't enforce it. So you can thank your good friend, Lord Pickles, on that front. With regard to electric vehicle charging there, I think the response of the trade would be that, that they would be looking, this is one of the busiest ranks. No Hackney carriage driver would want to spend the length of time on that rank charging a vehicle or nearby, but we have agreed, and I seem to recollect it was the subcommittee earlier this year or last year, didn't we agree, EV charging points in, I think, Gunn Street and another location in the town centre? And there's also going to be a facility down at the Bus Depot around the cattle market. So there will be charging points in the town centre accessible to the trade, but this is, this is one of the key ranks where the turnover is very rapid. So even with the rapid charging points, which I think at the most rapid are half an hour, I don't think any taxi would be in this area long enough to charge, even if we'd got the point there.
Thank you. I've not seen anyone else indicate. So can we move to the recommended action then on page 17? So noting the report and the decisions in that, in section two, can we all agree the recommended action? Yeah, excellent.
Thank you. We move on to item six, which is the SIL, Localised Funding Scheme 2020/21, Result of Statutory Consultation. Can I ask Mr Jones Penman to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair. So we've undertaken a, a further four statutory consultations regarding these SIL schemes. So these relate to three proposed separate crossings that could be funded from local SIL contributions. First is Addington Road, where I'm pleased to report that we've had 41 responses of support, which is excellent, one comment and two objections. So our recommendation is that the subcommittee agree to us proceeding to develop a delivery planning. The second site is Church End Lane, so there are two consultations conducted for this because, as well as the crossing itself, we also needed to adjust some of the school keep clears. So we've only had one comment to that, so again, our recommendation is that the subcommittee agree to us delivering that scheme. And finally, to Norcutt Road, where we've had two objections and, and one comment. The objections relate to the necessary bus stop relocation, which is a point of another area where we're recommending an agreement from the subcommittee. So we have the crossing itself, but also the road safety audits have suggested that we should conduct some speed surveys, which we're undertaking, and that could mean that the bus stop would need to be relocated further away from the originally anticipated location. So we're also seeking agreement from the subcommittee that if that is necessary to avoid delay to the scheme, that we could proceed to statutory consultation on that adjustment and bring the results back to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr Pen. Councillor Whitton, you indicated?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd welcome the Addington Road crossing. I think this is great, and the, the only objection, I think it's about someone's drive, but from what I can see, it's not going to affect their drive at all anyway. Question was about the Thames Valley Police comment. I assume that doesn't matter.
Mr Pen, are you good?
That's comment 44 on page 36, which is page four of that. Yes, I mean, it's, it's a generalised comment, and yes, as you say, it's, it's been designed, the scheme's been road safety audited as well, and we wouldn't be designing it in a way that we thought would, would cause obstruction. I think in the original report, and I think it's mentioned in this, it's, it's a particularly challenging location, and there is really one location for it. And also provides the subcommittee assurance as well, after these schemes have been implemented, should you agree to do so, there will be a further road safety audit that will be checking compliance and, and picking up any potential concerns there as well.
Thank you, Mr Pen. Just to remind the committee, I mean, the board councillors were all notified of this, so I didn't get any, any objections. So can we agree with the recommendation and go forward with this? any objections. So can we agree with the recommendation and go forward with this? 2.1, 2.2, 2.3? Yeah, thank you. We move on to the item seven, which is Caversham Primary School zebra crossing, result of the statutory consultation. Mr Pen?
Thank you, Chair. And on to another zebra crossing. So this time, we've got a proposal for a new separate crossing to facilitate, well, particularly facilitate school arrival and departure times. So this is where there is an existing, was existing school crossing patroller. So we undertook a statutory consultation. We've received 47 indications of support and was really pleased that a lot of those do relate to children crossing and certainly seemed to be a lot of parents responding to suggest that they'd be happier letting their children walk to school, whereas they wouldn't before, which is exactly what we're trying to achieve with these facilities. We did receive 15 objections and also a further comment. I mean, again, as we refer to in the report, it is another challenging location. However, we feel that it's the best location en route to and from the school. This has, again, been independently road safety audited and if agreed for implementation, we'll have a further audit post-implementation as well. So our recommendation is that officers be allowed to proceed to delivery planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Adele, you indicated?
Thank you, Chair. So I actually live on the lower part of Oakley Road, the hill section, so I know this junction very, very well. I've now my fourth child at Caversham Primary and the older ones are at Highdown, but also they went to preschool in Caversham Heights. So I used to cross this junction at least four times a day. When I was doing that, it is very, very difficult to cross, particularly with small children. So I'm really pleased to see this proposal come forward. I disagree with the objectives who say it's only needed at school start and end time so the lollipop person is sufficient. It really isn't. I'd like to see more crossing facility at this junction. But one thing I do want to raise and sort of flag with officers is that the supporters, and one object said it as well, who are saying you're also going to need a crossing across Oakley Road are absolutely right. Because what's happening at the moment is that because the lollipop person, it goes to the west of Oakley Road, people cross on the northern section of Oakley Road, who are coming from that end of Caversham Heights, which is much quieter than the section of Oakley Road that I live on. They cross there, then they come down there and they're on the right side, correct side, I should say, of Oakley Road to then come down and go along Blenheim Road to reach the school. What's now going to happen is they're going to come down my side of Oakley Road and then have to cross a very busy road to get across to school. And I once timed trying to get across on a rainy day and it took me nearly five minutes to cross Oakley Road because of the level of traffic. Because when it's raining, more people drive their little darlings to school and let everybody else's little darlings get drenched. So I think this is good, this crossing, but it is going to bump higher up the need for a crossing across Oakley Road. And so I'd really urge everyone to think of it as the first stage in a solution for people crossing in this area rather than a fix, because it isn't and you're going to see a lot more requests in Oakley Road. I also wanted to just clarify, they seemed to, well, they were a supporter, but they seemed to be under the impression that removing the right-hand turn down to the hill bit of Oakley Road would prevent right-hand turns from Kibmore Road onto the lower section of Oakley Road, which is not my understanding of the drawings, but I just wanted to clarify that that was a misunderstanding in that comment and not something that would happen. I wanted to ask about the resident who was concerned about access to their drive. And I also wanted to comment that somebody said it would make it more difficult to drive their child to school and I don't think that's a problem. Because we want to make it easier for you to walk your children to school. Yeah, so I had those couple of questions. And also it is going to make it more important to provide a way for people to cross across Oakley Road, lower down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Pen. Your answer.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor. With regards to the further crossings, I completely agree. I think we can see more and more of these as we're seeing with SIL allocations. Perhaps if I can guess with you after the meeting, this is something that we could add to the request for traffic management measures and get that on the list straight away and potentially that could be.
It's not my ward, but hopefully the Ward councillors would agree.
Of course. In terms of the right turn, we're not banning any vehicle movements. Perhaps it's a little bit of confusion. We would need to make space and remove the right turn filter lane, which arguably isn't particularly wide anyway. So that's all we're doing. We're not banning any or blocking any vehicle movements. It's just relining because we've had to build out the footway a little bit. And it is just a little bit, just to create a bit more capacity on that side because of the narrow footways. So it's just to create a bit of space around that, a bit of a deflection as you're approaching it. In terms of the driveways, again, I think a lot of that's in relation to that build-out. It's not a big build-out. Again, it's been road safety audited. It will do again. And we'll be making sure that's profiled when we're out there delivering the scheme, if that's agreeable with members. And certainly in terms of making it more difficult to drive to work, to school, sorry. Yeah, we're trying to remove barriers to walking and using other transport modes. And I don't believe that this is going to create a significant amount of congestion in the area over facilities that are there, but what it does do is provide pedestrians with a controlled crossing and make it easier for them to cross safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cornell, you indicated?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, this is a scheme where the local residents, I'm sure, will be delighted. This is something I get asked about on a quite regular occasion. So it's a question of when, not if. Now, they'll be delighted with that. I was going to ask about the widening. Could that be addressed perhaps just by the painted line? But obviously it can't. You just need to widen the pavement and you can't just have people standing in a painted area. There's no no safety there. So I'll be, I'm fully supportive of this scheme. I'd just like to assure councillor Barnett Ward that her hard-working Ward councillors will be picking up the issue or have picked up the issue of an Oakley Road crossing and will be working hard to her satisfaction, I hope. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, thank you. Right, so if you took those points up forward and can we agree to the recommendation action to proceed with this, to implement this game? Yeah, agreed. Item eight is Red Route West, Norcott Road and Oxford Road base. Mr Penman, could you introduce the item?
Thank you, Chair. So this is an item that we're actually bringing back to the subcommittee. So we, when we implemented the west section of Reading's Red Route, there were issues raised or concerns raised by residents who were parking on verges, overspilling their off-street parking areas and were getting tickets, PCNs, for doing so. We quickly implemented some free-to-use parking bays on Norcott Road and we've undertaken a statutory consultation to get those permanently implemented. When we brought the results back, which were one support, one objection, two comments, which were appended to the report, whilst as part of that report, the loading bay that we've implemented in Oxford Road was agreed. The bays in Norcott Road, we were asked to go away and review and look at other options. We've done that. We don't consider there are other options. We understand that residents are no longer be able to do what they did before. However, arguably, they shouldn't have been using highway verges and potentially footway areas to park in any case. So we've provided facilities that we can consider are safe and appropriate for on-street parking. And we're seeking agreement for the subcommittee to agree to us to seal that traffic regulation order with a slight amendment to overcome one of the comments, which was regarding concerns of driveway access. So it's a reduction of the bay of approximately a metre, very minor alteration. The consequences, if we can't reach agreement to implement those restrictions, are that we would have to remove the bays. And this would include Oxford Road as well, which is on the same traffic regulation order. So the recommendation of officers, as it was before, is that we implement those bays with that slight alteration, as we've indicated in the report.
All right, thank you. I see no indication. So does the committee know the report and agree with the recommended action in 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4? To go ahead? Okay, thank you. The next bit is always private, confidential. There's no member of public can press a player, so I would ask them to leave. So we need to switch the microphone now.